I'm going to call to order the meeting of February 28th. I know, having the mood today. Everyone's here, good to see you all. We can open up with public audience. Anyone have anything they want to share? Great. Moving on to Board and Administrative Communications, Emily?
Hi. So, a little bit of a letter we could act -- activities in the elementary school. One of the major things is they had successful kindergarten orientations at a couple of schools, I know Squadron and Lativer on the 23rd, where parents of incoming kindergarteners had chances to ask questions and see what that transition's going to be like. Also, in the elementary schools at -- some of them are celebrating Read Across America Day this Thursday. It's Dr. Seuss's birthday, so there'll be different reading programming across elementary schools. Also, at Tooten Hills, they have their sixth grade musical this Thursday, also March 2nd. The middle school is also preparing for their musical, Souza Cole Jr., which will be March 16th, 17th, and 18th. And I've heard from some of the high schoolers helping out that it's shaping up really well and it's going to be a good show. The middle school also have the degrees of reading power test Wednesday, March 8th, will be administered to seventh and eighth graders. At the high school, we had really exciting Battle of the Bands last Friday, featuring some good performances by Dylan and Mr. O'Brien on the guitar.
Nice.
The winner ended up being a senior band, Inexplicably Green, which they also did a really great job. We also have spring sports registration starts tomorrow, so that'll sort of kick off that season. Winter's kind of winding down, and we have a couple of teams moving on in state tournaments and in the league. And last thing, there's the Unified Theater Show at the high school, which is bringing together students with all different level -- levels of -- yeah, that's our shirt. Our show theme is be unique.
There's the t-shirt. Awesome.
This year.
Be unique.
Yeah, we were having our last rehearsals this week, and I think it's going to be a great show, so that's this Thursday, if anyone's around.
What time?
I believe it's at 6:00.
5:00. 5:00 at the high school. Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Great. Jeff?
No.
Tom?
Nothing.
Tom?
I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Lukey?
In addition to Unified Theater, on Thursday, Community for Care will be having their next program. It will be around -- it will be a panel discussion around marijuana. Is it what it used to be? Legalization. We'll have a pediatrician on the panel, family therapist, recovery and substance abuse counselors, law enforcement, as well as a parent. So, we'll be taking questions from the audience, and we've also solicited questions from both middle school and high school students, which will be used if need -- if necessary with the panel. So, that's 6:30, March 8th, at the Simsbury Public Library in the program room.
Great. Mr. Sullivan?
Just a quick reminder to the four members of the Policy Committee that we will be meeting Tuesday morning at 7:30. Mrs. Wild and I are pulling together about eight or nine policies, ranging from exciting things like fingerprinting of new employees to use of computer systems. So, we'll have the whole list for you on Tuesday morning at 7:30, and then hopefully for readings for the full board at the end of March.
Great.
Good. So, on Monday afternoon, we had the Social Studies Vertical Leaders Meeting held at the Simsbury Free Library, and we had the opportunity for Tara Willerup to give us a tour of the library, as well as all the various services that they have available. What we really were attempting to do is have our social studies leaders better understand the resources that we have in town. So, there were light bulbs going off and all kinds of good conversation of how we can expose students through our curriculum to the free library. So, thank you, Tara, for your hospitality.
So glad to have everyone there.
Yeah.
The town is full of a lot of great historical treasures that it's nice to be able to share.
And Rich Curtis, who's our department supervisor at the high school, is on the board.
He's a trustee of the Simsbury Free Library.
So, that was great.
All right. Matt?
Just a few comments on the budget process. I know we're going to have an opportunity to discuss the budget in a few minutes and then hopefully take a vote, but I just wanted to take a minute, thank my staff, thank the board for the time and effort that went into the process, definitely a thorough process, and talk a little bit about moving forward, because I think we're under unusual circumstances that everybody's aware of this year, and just wanted to frame that, where we are today and where we're moving in the next couple of months. We had an opportunity to attend the Board of Finance meeting last week. The town invited Bob DiCresenza, who's the town attorney, just to talk about the circumstances and think through some of the parameters and the options that we do have, to be as thoughtful as we can in planning our budget. So, one thing that was discussed, and it's actually much like we did last year, was moving out the referendum date to the end of June, or mid-June, about tentatively. That will give us a little more opportunity to meet, to discuss, and try to get as accurate information as we can. And I guess that's what we're after, and that's the most difficult challenge in this, is that the governor's budget with proposed impact to Simsbury of over $4 million. We don't believe that that will be the number that we will plan to. We've decided that moving forward, we'll wait till mid-April to get the appropriations numbers, which won't be the end number either, but maybe give us a better indication of where we are with some of the controversial topics on the table. At that time, I think what the plan is, is that the boards would convene, whether it's at a Board of Finance meeting or at a three-board meeting. We would look at the appropriations budget numbers, determine that impact to the town, and then start to really have conversation about the key parameters, right? So, one of them being the tolerance level that the Board of Finance would consider for a tax increase, the discussion about potential reserve levels, and then the third leg is the impact to our operating budget and the town operating budget. So, it buys us some time. I think it buys us an opportunity to get a little more accurate information, and maybe most importantly, we don't -- I don't want to say it's a severe situation, but we don't want to overreact in the sense that we create scenarios with magnitude and significant budget reductions to staff and to program, then to come back and have to make decisions that, oh, we didn't really have to do those things potentially because the scenario's different. I think this has allowed us the opportunity to do the work once, be as thoughtful as we can in approaching the situation, and move from there. My plan after this meeting is to summarize in a letter, as I do on an annual basis, to both staff members and our parent community where we are with our budget, but I would also delineate a little bit of the differences in this process and moving forward and try to clarify expectations.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
So, you mentioned, Matt, that similar to last year, we did do the same thing last year, right? We did actually have a referendum that was in June, right?
We did. There was uncertainty about the magnitude of the changes in the education cost share grant. So, we actually attended a Board of Finance meeting. At that time, it was proposed, what I had just talked about, the Board of Finance would consider taking a portion of those dollars from reserves. They asked us, myself and Lisa, to work with our boards on potential reductions. I think the amounts were in the range of $150,000 to $200,000. You know, the difference this year is that the potential magnitude could be much larger than that. But it's a process that we've worked collaboratively on in the future, so from that standpoint, I mean, it's a positive that we've been down that road.
Thank you.
Sounds great. I don't have much to add, but I look forward to seeing all these performances that are -- we're getting to the -- that time of year. It's really fun seeing all the hard work pay off. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of February 7th, our Budget Workshop.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And our -- the next is the regular minutes from the regular meeting of February 14th, 2017.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor?
Same.
Opposed? And now, moving on to personnel. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just one item for tonight, but it's a hugely important one, because we are here to announce the retirement of Kathy McKenna, a third-grade teacher at Terriffille School. And your exhibit is correct, 42 years teaching in Simsbury, and really just one of the legends of Terriffille School. In my meeting with Kathy, she let me know that her husband, who was also a teacher, retired a few years ago, and she's looking to join him in retirement now. It's finally time. And she also let me know that she was a proud Simsbury High graduate, and actually was the first class that went through the current Simsbury High School. So, just somebody who has given so much to the town, and I'm sure there'll be great
Second.
Thank you very much. Tom? All those in favor?
celebrations up in Terriffille for Kathy, so need a motion to accept that retirement.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you, second. Our next item is the adoption of the 2017-2018 public school budget. Thank you very much. All those in favor? We, again, looked at this last meeting, and we just heard some words from Mr. Curtis
Aye.
Anyone have anything they want to add?
Go ahead, Tara.
It's just really impressive, and it's wonderful, and what a gift she's given our about it going forward. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Leclair? district, our town, and our students. Thank you so much for all that she's done.
I'll let Matt start out if he's got any further.
All those in favor? Have we already done?
Yeah, I would just kind of note the main differences in this budget planning process
We did that.
Great, we're all good. Excellent. Okay, now we are -- our next item is the adoption of the 2017-18 non-public school
compared to the last couple of years. One key consideration is that there are $735,000 of reductions that we listed that are essentially
budget. We all looked at it last week, last meeting, and...
based on assumptions.
And just as a reminder, I mean, that's one of the last tabs in your binder.
There are strategies that we have used before, but not strategies that we have used at this point in the budget process.
It's roughly one-third based on the nursing-type services that are provided to the non-public
So, one of them, we talked about, was really looking at the current-year spending, ensuring that we have -- we do not have to expend the funds in the non-lapsing account, which
schools, about a third to transportation, and a little less than a third to culture park and rec.
was over $300,000.
And it's straightforward and very -- it's based on statute, so it's...
The other is to take advantage of $400,000 in the Open Choice Grant and take line items
Anyone have any questions or concerns or anything they want to talk about?
from equipment. And I -- equipment, I can't -- I don't have the specifics in front of me, Burke, but
Then I'd accept a motion.
you can note them.
Thanks, Todd.
Two key -- two or three key line items to lower the operating cost and put that cost
Please?
Move that the Board of Education adopt the 2017-18 non-public school budget in
onto the grant. We wanted to stay away from personnel in those situations, so that provided us some flexibility to get to the 2.48. In past years, we've, you know, started at the 2.48 and been able to use some of those strategies to lower that number towards the end. So, a little bit different there. I think a wise strategy to consider at this point with all factors. The other is, of course, we've given quite a bit of time to talk about the insurance line item and the increase of over $1 million due to the claims experience and where we are with our self-insurance fund. So, that's a second line item that's drastically different than the past couple of years. We were able to mitigate some of those cost increases. So, those are the kind of the two main pieces I wanted to note, too, as we go to vote on the budget, that are a little different.
Are there any other big assumptions that are still outstanding that could potentially drive it one way or the other? Burke?
No, we've really, you know, we've finalized OPEV and pensions, so really, at this point, it's just we'll get one more month's of claims data for health insurance sometime probably in about the middle of March. So, with that kind of last look typically is when, you know, hopefully, the assumed 15% rate increase doesn't change in the wrong direction. You know, the claims experience will be key.
The other piece, we met with administrators on Friday, reiterated really cautious decisions in current-year spending, recognizing that any dollars we can't free up can potentially be put towards that non-lapsing to help offset the increase a little bit more. I don't expect that, with where we are, to be overly significant, but we really want to be prudent in how we look at that.
Anyone else have any questions? Maybe we should go around and just see how everyone's feeling about what we're presenting and what we're thinking about putting forward.
I'm feeling good about what we're putting forward. I have great uneasiness with what's going on hard for it, but I think what we're putting forward is a very responsible and a very good thoughtful budget, and thanks to all of you for your work on this, and obviously, your leadership, too.
Yeah, I mean, I feel pretty much the same, and we talked a lot about it last time. It's a thorough process, and I support what we've got.
I'd echo that and just say, for those who are just newly tuning into this, that it's a very transparent and open process. So, if this is the first meeting that they're listening to or watching, that, you know, all these documents is, you know, a lot of hard work, but also a lot of detail. And I know everybody says, hey, go back to bottom-up budgeting. That's, in essence, what's done every year. And, you know, I know we're making new investments in terms of math and trying to do the right thing in terms of programs. I think that's the right answer as well, and I know we're going to be faced with some tough meetings in the future, too. But I do support where we are at.
Sue?
You know, very much echoing what everybody else has already said. I think the things that are asked for in this budget as additions are all necessary and thoughtful and there to do the best by our staff and students. And I really don't think that there's anything in here that is easily done away with, if you will. And I think that, you know, I went back again, and you look at the history of the budgets. I've been on this board. My first budget I voted for was '08-'09, and that was the only budget I've ever voted for that was over 1%. And that's a long time of us staying under 2%. Every budget is 1 point something, but it's a long time. And, you know, anyone who thinks we aren't doing our job would be mistaken, because you all work so hard to give us such a great budget to go through, and we appreciate it greatly.
I think that I'm feeling the same way. I think everything that's in here is very important. I think we have to continuously be very aware of not diminishing our product and not diminishing what we're able to give to our students, because that is one of our greatest assets of Simsbury and has always been one of our greatest assets of Simsbury. And it's really important that we make sure that we can keep the programming as rigorous as we can, and I think that this budget does that. I appreciate that we didn't look at people, we looked at other opportunities to find room, to make sure our budget was able to be reasonable, and I think that this is important to -- I think everyone's -- it's important for everyone to understand how tight this budget is and how important keeping our product and our school district viable and vibrant is, so I hope that it is well-received.
That said, anyone else have anything else they want to say? I would accept a motion if someone wanted to give it.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2017-18 public school budget in the amount of $69,125,170, which represents an increase of $1,670,601, or 2.48%.
Second?
Second.
Nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all again for your very, very diligent work and hard questions. Thank you. Moving on, we have a -- because we have -- we will be presenting this budget to -- we will present this budget to the Board of Finance on March 14th. We will be needing to cancel -- I recommend that we cancel the March 14th meeting, and we all go to the Board of Finance meeting to support this budget in the same breath. All those -- anyone?
I'll move.
Thank you?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Wonderful. Moving on, we have the NEASC update.
All right. I'd like to invite Andy O'Brien, President of Simsbury High School, Jaclyn Patrella, and Keith Berthew to the table. As you know, every 10 years, the high school goes through its evaluation process. It started about 18 months ago, where Jaclyn and Keith took on the co-leading, the chairs of this committee, and they led it with almost over 20 other teachers that took on leadership positions to help the process through. So, 18 months' worth of work. As you know, it culminated with the visit, four-day visit, back in September. So, we have received the report, and so this is sort of the final presentation for Jaclyn and Keith. It's their wrap-up of 18 -- over 18, now two months' worth.
Don't look so happy.
But it's an opportunity for us to share with you what the NEASC committee found with our work at Simsbury High School. So, I'm going to kick it over to this group.
So, before we get started, I just wanted to say a little bit more about Emily's report. She had referenced the Battle of the Bands, and I think I would be remiss if I did not take a minute to recognize Dylan Fitch for his outstanding performance on guitar. His entire band, you had to be there to believe it, although there is video circulating. I know it's out there somewhere, if you haven't seen it. They really connected with the crowd. It was electrifying. It was something that exceeded everyone's expectations. And I have to tell you, on behalf of the faculty band, it was pretty difficult for us to walk out after you guys and the other bands. It was really something, so congratulations to you.
It's usually on SCTV. I'm sure it'll be on.
Keep an eye out for them. Despite his column exterior, he's an animal. So, a bit about the accreditation cycle. You are always somewhere in this 10-year cycle, so that's the reason for this slide, to say, even though we've just completed our evaluation visit in September, and we are now going to embark on the follow-up work to enact, following up on the recommendations in the final report, you could see that this is a cycle of continuous improvement, that in two years, they'll be expecting us to report out on how we've addressed the highlighted recommendations, and then over five years, where we are. And then after that five-year point, we start to begin the process of hosting our next visit. New standards will have been developed, we'll have time to look at those, and it really is a rigorous form of professional growth and development, but it's one of the best that are out there, that any school would want to participate in.
So, we presented, I think about a year ago at this point, about the accreditation process, so I'm not going to go too in-depth about this, as you're all familiar with it. But the accreditation is a mark of approval from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, of which we are a member, that says, "We live up to the researched standards." That they have -- they go through their own 10-year cycle, and the most recent standards we either excel at or meet in order to remain credited. So, we'll go into a little bit about that.
So, as you probably remember, there were seven standards that were measured against, and there's the four teaching and learning standards, which are the first four, and the last three are your support standards, which is the leadership and the resources for learning. So, each standard has a series of indicators which were measured against, so our job was to look at each indicator, find evidence, at least three pieces of evidence to say that whether or not we are achieving that indicator or not achieving that indicator, and that became a report that we presented to the committee. And so, from there, we had our visit, which I have to thank you all for taking part in it, whether it was the reception or the interviews. And so, for the committee, after receiving the report, they came to the high school. And what we did in about a year and a half, they had to do in four days. So, through their interviews, observations, examination of student work, the panel presentation, they had to look at all of the standards and all of the indicators and evaluate what they thought, how we met the standards, and they wrote their report, which was what we received back, and you have received, and I'm sure have read today.
She is kidding. It's 110 pages. You know, it will take some time.
That's why they're here tonight.
A bit about the format of the report. So, it starts out with the standards, so you will be able to see them. They're all listed. Then you have our school and community summary and an introduction, and then seven chapters essentially organized by standard. And then each chapter has three components, so they will start with their conclusions, their takeaways, their commendations, the things that they are really recognizing us for that were just exceptional, their recommendations, so areas of growth that we should keep looking to address over the next two to five years, and then finally, our follow-up responsibilities.
And just to add to that, we received the report, I'm not sure how long ago, in January or December, and we went through the report, and we were able to speak with the chair and give him our input or any edits or any inaccuracies that we found in the report. So, we were able to go back and forth until everybody was satisfied with the report.
So, the report, just a couple of highlights about the report. The report is 110, fun-packed pages that you will, I'm sure, enjoy reading right before you go to sleep. 52 commendations, they were very good commendations. I think you'll be very pleased that some of the work that you've done has been recognized there. 29 recommendations, and important to note, normally, I've done NEASC quite a bit, and Neil will back me up on this, a normal report has between 40 to 60, usually closer to 60, the way that the reports are written, recommendations. 29 is the lowest I've ever seen. So, that really, there's a slew of people that did their work over the past 10 years to bring us up to speed on this, so I'm very proud of them.
It's 20 fewer than 10 years ago.
Right.
Not that that number sticks in my head.
So, to give you, yes, to give you an idea, 50 is about what you should expect, and we ended up with 29. In fact, the report that the staff at Simsbury High School put together was asked to be their new gold standard for NEASC, so they're going to be using that report as their exemplar from now on. So, your staff did a phenomenal job on that work.
They're going to do some things to essentially remove our identity from that report, but they're still using it as the standard to show people what they would like to see when they have their future visits.
Most likely, it will be called Eagle Brook.
To your dedication, thank you so much.
Eagle Brook High School will probably be what they call.
Thank you very much for all your work to make that happen.
Could I just raise a quick question? You had mentioned that there was a back and forth until there was complete agreement on both parties. Were there any significant differences that had to be resolved, or were they all relatively minor?
They were relatively minor. There was a few inaccuracies in the report. For example, they described the evaluation cycle incorrectly, so we, you know, came back and said, "This is actually how it works," and he was very amenable to fixing it. There was a few recommendations that we kind of challenged and asked about, and he was -- the chair was excellent in talking us through about what his view was or whether he agreed with us after we gave him some of that evidence. There was a few that were actually striked as well.
There's not a lot of latitude that's afforded to us. We're really looking for factual inaccuracies.
Yes.
And then, we did find a couple of typos that we assisted in.
Oh, my.
But those, I mean, again, with such a large report in such a short period of time, those things happen.
Thank you.
In addition to the final report, in your package, you also have a copy of what's called a notification letter. So, you may be able to see it in there, and it says, "It's addressed to myself, dear Mr. O'Brien." And essentially, the notification letter has a couple of purposes. One of them is to confirm that our vote, excuse me, our report was received and voted upon by the commission, and that it confirms our accreditation status. So, those two things have happened. And then what they do is they pull out some of the most noteworthy commendations or highlights to say, "These were things we really liked about what you did and the things that we saw." But then they also pull out and identify what they call highlighted recommendations. So, from the 29 recommendations that we have in our report, from the various standards, there are 10 that they feel are areas that we should address over the next two to five years. If we look at some of the commendations, they really liked our core values and beliefs, that these are, you know, preparation, passion, and personal growth, that are things that our school rallies around. We use them to inform our decision-making, and they resonate, and they're widely visible. They really liked the peer observation process that we have in place right now, something that's occurring across the district. They like the Trojan Code Committee and the work that they're doing, and the development of our schedule, of our eight-period schedule that we have that allows our students to take advantage of so many different course offerings that we have. They like the emphasis on inquiry and problem-solving and higher-order thinking and authentic learning experiences. So, while they shadow
Thank you.
In addition to the final report, in your package, you also have a copy of what's called a notification letter. So you may be able to see it in there. And it says, "It's addressed to myself, dear Mr. O'Brien." And essentially, the notification letter has a couple of purposes. One of them is to confirm that our vote, excuse me, our report was received and voted upon by the commission, and that it confirms our accreditation status. So those two things have happened. And then what they do is they pull out some of the most noteworthy commendations or highlights to say, "These were things we really liked about what you did and the things that we saw." But then they also pull out and identify what they call highlighted recommendations. So from the 29 recommendations that we have in our report, from the various standards, there are 10 that they feel are areas that we should address over the next two to five years. If we look at some of the commendations, they really liked our core values and beliefs, that these are, you know, preparation, passion, and personal growth, that are things that our school rallies around. We use them to inform our decision-making, and they resonate, and they're widely visible. They really liked the peer observation process that we have in place right now, something that's occurring across the district. They like the Trojan Code Committee and the work that they're doing. And the development of our schedule, of our eight-period schedule that we have that allows our students to take advantage of so many different course offerings that we have. They like the emphasis on inquiry and problem-solving and higher-order thinking and authentic learning experiences. So while they shadowed students and observed teachers, they were truly impressed by the, you know, the amount of real-world problems that students were grappling with and their ability to work together on it was exceptional. They liked the collaboration among the school board and superintendent and myself. That was readily apparent, not only in the interviews, but when they take a look at our website and they see our documents that we have. When they look at our continuous improvement plans and our annual reports, those are all things that speak to the high-caliber school district and high school. And then finally, you know, there were others, but just to pull a couple out, the library of media center services they were impressed with, and then the community's commitment to supporting our school. We don't have an exceptional school without the continued support of our community to provide us with the resources and materials and the physical plant to make all those things possible. When we look at the recommendations, again, these are the 10 that they believe we should focus on within the two, the first two years in our report, and you'll see more in our presentation on our follow-up procedures. They like us to communicate more clearly the, our 21st-century learning expectations, so that these are things that everyone is not only aware of, but we're assessing them and reporting individual and whole-school progress towards attaining those. This is something that was done in the past, but we got away from, and this is something we can get back to. They want us to expand the use of differentiated instruction. It's tough, I think, for them to have gotten a complete view of all of the instruction that's happening in the time that they are with us, but during the time that they were there, they had said that that would be a recommendation. They suggested that, they recognize that we are frequently checking the understanding of our students through the use of formative assessment, but we don't always have mechanisms in place to act on that data so that we can adjust instruction in the moment or the next day, as opposed to thinking maybe about the next time this course would be taught, some things I might be doing differently. There was some discussion around levels, and they felt that it was important that we continue to communicate the value of having a heterogeneously mixed groupings of students. As opposed to developing more levels, we should really be looking to reduce levels so that we can have different learners present to benefit from one another, and also to make it, to make environments that where teachers have fewer students of high need that they can really address and work with. And then finally, they were aware that we were going to be increasing our technology in the district as we make the move to a one-to-one, but they wanted to ensure that as we increase the amount of devices and their use, that we also are increasing our infrastructure and our support, so that we're able to support our teachers and our students as we make that leap.
Can I comment about the levels? I guess I'm wondering where the recommendations come from. Do they have this, like, massive checklist, and these are the ones that didn't score as high as others? Because some of them are so specific, I mean, they didn't have time to be able to write all of these.
Well, I could approach that question, I believe. So the committee, I don't know if I told you this, the committee was built up with, each standard had two people signing to it. So, and the way they worked through that, and you'll get a little bit of this in a second, but there's indicators, and those indicators are very specific. And I don't know if I went over those indicators last time I was here, because it's all kind of blending together at this point, but the indicators are very similar. So the indicator that that came from says to foster homogeneity within the classroom by reducing either levels or by offering a specific course that all students have to take together. So the wording is much more clear than that. I apologize for not having it memorized yet. But that particular one has been the bane of many of school districts, from the top, like us, all the way down in the whole gamut, because it is very, very difficult in a school to offer classes that all students have to take. So we always struggle with, as far as I've been here, and it's a tremendous challenge, and I have never been on a committee that hasn't made that recommendation.
Right.
Ever. And it didn't matter if it was Eagle Brook High School or otherwise.
Hasn't made the level recommendation, the level.
That particular recommendation.
There's no school that's doing it, I think, the way NEAS has it envisioned.
So they've got this philosophy in their mind of ideal.
But we haven't seen it in practice.
There are schools that will do something like an introductory, like a ninth-grade social studies or a ninth-grade English, and they'll have an entry course in the school be completely unlevelled. And it would tend to happen more in smaller schools than larger schools, but there are definitely places doing that kind of work, where they don't distinguish between an honors and a level two, and they just put all of the students into the same class. And that is, when you say it's a philosophy of NEAS on this standard, it's very much a philosophy of NEAS.
Just a follow-up.
Thanks for explaining that.
A follow-up on Todd's question. Just looking at those 10 that they chose to highlight, two of them really caught my eye as being very significant, and that was one of them.
Yep.
The level issue. And the other one, which I've circled, is one, two bullets above, the one about formal process to, well, the last part of it says, "21st-century learning skills using the school-wide analytic rubrics." Is that a recommendation, a statement that we don't have a school-wide analytic rubric?
No, we do have them. We do have them, and they are used.
Okay.
So.
They're not dinging us about rubrics.
Well, I think they want to make sure that we consistently use them. There's one, there's, so in the report, they will say that these were used so many times a year, and that then there was some inconsistency in their use. When I arrived last year, I did not tell people, "You have to use these rubrics so many times this year." It was my first year, and I was saying, "Carry on. Let's do the good work that we do as I learn about our school."
Well, that brings up kind of the general question. These, the 10 that are pointed out in the letter, some seem more significant than others. Do we have an obligation to respond to these?
Oh, yeah. We'll get to that. You'll see that shortly.
We'll cover that briefly.
Sorry.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
If you're going to get to it, please feel free to tell me, just to be patient with the comments here. Of the 10, any surprises, or did you see some of these coming?
There's, the way that this report is put together, both of them, the one that we put together, the self-study and the visiting team's study, the way that they're put together, when you do 18 months of study, nothing comes as a surprise. In fact, anybody who's been through this process before could probably have listed these recommendations and commendations before we began. However, it's very important to let the entire staff go through this process so they learn more about the school. I've always considered this process to be the ideal way to get a staff to self-reflect about their processes and where they fit into it. And I don't know if we have another method that is this deeply treating of this particular type of self-study. So again, either one of these gentlemen could have probably written the commendations and recommendations before we started and been pretty close.
I think there were some that hit home more to the teachers when he, when John, our chair, gave the presentation and highlighted a few of the recommendations, and the leveling being one of them. And I think that came out of, a lot of teachers during their group meetings and interviews expressed, you know, their concerns about levels. And so he talked about the need to communicate why it's good not to have as many levels. And that hit home, and the differentiation was the other one that really hit home, because I think people thought they were doing it, and maybe not in the view that NEAS has or that he had at the time. So there's, I don't think anyone was surprised, but there are certainly ones where I think people were a little surprised that was a recommendation, because they felt like maybe four days was not enough time to see whether or not we're really doing this, or whether or not it's really effective.
There's value in the process for sure, and a part of the self-study was us reflecting upon our data and our report, and then developing our own critical strengths and needs, and then building our own two- and five-year plan already. So we already had a draft plan. It's going to be very interesting to see how that compares to their recommendations, because some of these things, again, the process, as Keith said before, forces you to make those decisions. And there's a lot of value in having somebody else from the outside come in and say, and validate our own reflection. And when we look at this, as we look at these, and we'll go through them, by acting upon these, these are the, this is the work that's going to take us from where we are to the next level. We constantly are comparing ourselves against other high-performing districts, and it's really about fine-tuning right now. Right? We're working on fine-tuning to just get those, to really fill in those gaps that are going to propel us that much further ahead. So that's what we're looking to have happen from this report.
So now that we have our report, we have to form a follow-up committee, which Andy has, is in the process or is completed, having a follow-up committee. And one of the major roles of that committee is to now review the report and look at the recommendations and develop a plan and establish a timeline for two to five years. So we have to give a two-year report, and we have to give a five-year report of where we are in meeting those recommendations. And Tom, to answer your question, we technically have the right to reject some of the recommendations. I don't know how good that would look if we were doing them.
It has to be based on.
It has to be, there has to be a really good reason for us, I think, to reject them. For example, let's say air conditioning is one of them, I believe, and we may reject because we don't have the money or the ductwork or, you know, whatever to do the air conditioning. But we're in a good spot. Some schools have to give a six-month to one-year report, and there are certain recommendations that they have to follow up on within a year, and we don't fall into that category, which is really good. So we have to develop a plan for two to five years. And two members will go with Andy to a follow-up committee training, the process and what they have to do. And then from there, the reports, well, the committees, the original committees will reconvene and look at their reports for their standards and assist in the process of developing a plan moving forward.
They recommended air conditioning?
I believe that was one of the recommendations.
Probably is, yeah. It could be.
It's on the third floor.
There are, yeah. Third floor, the auditorium, the cafeteria, there's areas. So I will have at least one person from each of the seven standards on this follow-up committee. And as Ms. Petrella said, the standards committees will reconvene, and then they'll take a look at this. So everybody was a part of this in the self-evaluation. Now our good job is to have everybody as much as possible apart in enacting and following up on the work. So their expectations when we address the recommendations will be that we take the recommendations and classify them into one of five categories. So in my two-year report and in my five-year report, I'll have to address each of the recommendations and where we are. What's interesting is we'll actually have the standards committees do this before the end of this year, because there are recommendations that we are already addressing. There's work around formative assessment that we're engaged in, around looking at our summative assessments that we're engaged in, you know, there's work that we are doing. So is it in progress? Is it something that's completed? Is it planned for the future? Bless you. Is it rejected or no action? Their expectations are that by the two-year mark, about a third of those recommendations are completed, okay? Which is reasonable. And then at the end of five years, that nearly all of the recommendations. So I think they understand that there may be some things that we may or may not be able to address, but that it's really up to us to identify and work with those that are the most important. And they've helped identify those, again, through the notification letter, those 10, those 10, they're looking to have much of that work occur in the first two years.
Question about that, that's kind of surprising. Nearly all of the recommendations, and of course, I, we haven't seen the complete list, but will the, will the high school have to employ additional resources in order to respond in this fashion to this evaluation?
Well, it depends. I mean, some recommendations carry with them a monetary, you know, component. Like, as Jaclyn referred to, air conditioning, that would be something that we'd have to look at with our resources. I know there are plans in the works now to address areas of the school. Those are things we're working on.
I think we'll have a better sense of that over the course of the springtime, when the teams get back and meet again, to try to get a sense of what they'll look like. And certainly, we'll talk about them and come forward if there's anything pressing that would need immediate action, but we don't foresee that happening right away. But there is that potential for more monetary.
Yeah, I guess we need to keep that in mind, then.
And Mr. Frank, there's one thing that you should remember. These are recommendations, and while powerful, they are not mandates. And it is completely acceptable for, and maybe I'm overstepping what I'm supposed to say here, but it's completely acceptable for a school district of this caliber to say, "I see why you recommended this. We're not going to take action on this. They're not going to rescind our accreditation status, but it'll probably come up in 10 years."
We'd have to have good.
That was my question, Mr. Berthium. I was wondering, so do we have our accreditation status based on this, or is this something that we're waiting until follow-up?
Our accreditation status is complete.
Okay.
Yeah, that's solid. Again, I said that with our notification letter, we're in a great place. We're in a great place there. If we decide not to act upon a recommendation, specifically if it's a highlighted recommendation, if we say no, we're going to take no action or reject, we would just have to have a really good rationale to support that.
And we're starting with 29 pieces as opposed to 50 or 60 or 70?
Yeah, correct. That's a really big deal.
And a lot of them are already in process, too, and don't have a monetary.
Yeah. I don't want to alarm you.
You know, for example, with the formative assessment, we've been working on that this year. And so a lot of them tie in nicely to our professional development and initiatives that are already taking place. And it's going to be our job to kind of find a balance so that we're not overloaded with initiatives based on this document, and then whatever Andy's vision is for the building, that we have to kind of meld the two together.
Well, I'm just glad, I'm just glad to hear that the audit was of value.
Oh, yeah.
Because sometimes you go through an audit, and it's like, "Okay, why do, why do we do this?" But I mean, it sounds like, you know, there are some opportunities and a lot of things that are already in progress. And I'm really kind of satisfied to hear that, because I know it's been a lot of work for you all.
And I want to put something in perspective. These recommendations read very gently. I've read recommendations that say, you know, "Please consider having your staff of professional status." For instance, when I was in Massachusetts, we walked into a school that only had 13% of its staff as professional teachers.
Wow.
So, I mean, we're not fighting a huge uphill battle here. We are a high-performing district, and you're always going to get recommendations. And they might sound really tough, but if you read them and you understand where we are in the spectrum, we're in good shape.
Just one, just one last question, please.
Sure.
And it really has to do with special education services. I just quickly glanced through the 10 that are highlighted in the letter. I see one that specifically references special education services. Was there, was there emphasis elsewhere in the report about special education services, or is it, we're pretty clean as far as in that, in that area?
You'll have to take a look at their, they're all in the, all the recommendations are in the, you have the complete report. So you could go through with some flags such as these and find that, you'll find those pages at the end of each standard. There's a lot of overlap amongst each of the standards, too. So if you're, if you're seen in this one, you might also see that thread in another area.
And Tom, I'll comment on that for a second. You know, the highlighted piece that talks about the effectiveness of services in relation to student performance, and, you know, coming before the board and discussing our examination of the achievement gap, we know that special ed students are representative of that gap. You've also heard me talk about one of the big five of special ed over the next five years is to examine service delivery pre-K-12. So I'm not surprised by the recommendation, and quite frankly, I'm energized by it because it's in line with what we've been talking about relative to special ed.
And one of the, one of the support standards, the school resources for learning, really is what focuses on all the support services in the building. You'll find a lot about special ed just in that report, their, their viewpoint of it and any recommendations that are associated.
Well, that comment was meant, really meant to be positive, because there wasn't much in there.
I, I mean, I think, just to bring the point home again, we are, we do have continuous progress in this district, and we are constantly working towards a lot of these goals. And we don't, I think we've, we're very careful to do a thoughtful process as to not overload any of our, any one department or teacher or administrator or anyone. So I'm pleased with this report greatly, and I know that we're working towards, you know, any continuous progress. And I like the pace we go at, because I think it's really important not to, not to overwhelm anybody, because we do a lot of work in these schools, and anytime we overwhelm anybody, it filters down to the students, and we just have to make sure that they have a safe and learning environment.
And the folks in NEAS understand that we have other business and other initiatives that we're working on, so that these recommendations do not now trump all of that work and push that to the side, which we're looking to address these in harmony with our vision for our growth and our other work that we have planned.
I'm very impressed with your work and how hard you worked in the, and the kudos and the acceptance that you got from NEAS. I'm glad you got the recognition that you did for all the hard work that you guys put into this, because everybody has been impressed by it, that I've heard speak of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We had a lot of support on this one, so thank you.
And I do think it's important to recognize Neil Sullivan, you know, as the principal prior to Andy O'Brien, and your two years here now to have been so deep in this process. So congratulations to both of you for the hard work that you've put forth. And again, to Jaclyn and to Keith for stepping forward.
It took an enormous amount of time and energy, and for them to commit to this work over
And, for them to commit to this work over a two-year period was outstanding. So, we're fortunate.
And, I still have great guilt of talking them into taking this.
As you should.
You did a great job.
He told us we were not allowed to be on the follow-up. So, you're smiling with that.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That is wonderful. Anyone have any other business? I'm opening up to public audience and I would like to hear more from Dylan about his Scotty Band's. Really not kidding.
It was awesome. I was looking forward to it since fifth grade, when I first went. And, I remember seeing, I think, exit to the gift shop in the freshman year. And, I knew that moment, I'm going to do that one day. And, I was so happy that that day was Friday. And, it was a great experience.
So glad.
Dylan did share with me that he had a crowd surfer.
Really? I'm not sure we really want to know about that. We're going to keep that quiet.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
Enthusiasm abounded.
And, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for your band's efforts.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure.
Appreciate that. Anyone have anything else? I would take a motion. Oh, yep, we'll see you all March 14th. I want to make sure you're all there. And, it is at, it's downstairs at the Board of Finance, at the main meeting room. Okay, motion is, Jeff?
Yeah, second.
Second is Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.